Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us today. Thank you for this spring season, the rain that you've blessed us with and the sunshine. And we ask that you please be with our community during periods of severe weather and watch over us and protect us. Thank you for all the gifts that you have given us and all the blessings. We thank you for the city government and the opportunity to be here tonight to work for the citizens of Springdale. And we ask that you please be with us and guide us in our decision-making. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. We will now call to order this regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025. And to start things off, I'll ask Anna McKinney to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Aaron Huntley.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fugierus.
Here.
And Ernest Kate.
Here.
All right, thank you. And I will now move to item four. This is the portion of each meeting the council sets aside to hear comments from our residents. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, I ask that you come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and please understand the council won't take action tonight on whatever you bring forward. And this will only be taking comments for items that are not already on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Come right on up.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, that's fine.
Y'all have had a reprieve. I hadn't been up here to yak at you since the old building.
Well, for all the fine folks watching at home, give us your name and address.
Melinda Mason. I reside for 40 years, come April, 106 West Allen Avenue by Station One and the post office off Holcomb. Oh, I will add, behind the German bar you blessed us with, with your form-based code. We've all heard, if you see something, say something. Well, I don't believe that's just limited to suspected terrorist activities. How about This is regarding the West Maple Avenue from 71 coming toward Holcomb. That would be east, as everybody orientated, as we say. Cyclists actually using those bike lanes are few. I would, most of the time, I'd say there's less than five in a week, maybe fewer. Most are riding, if they're riding at all, on Maple because it's narrow. They're on the sidewalk on the north side. Those protective concrete curbs are a hazard to pedestrians and our vehicles. A friend told me about her friend who stepped off the actual sidewalk, took a few steps, watching traffic left, right, left, right, as we were trained in elementary school, and promptly fell right over one and flat on her face into the street. Why would anyone be anticipating a curb sticking out into the street beyond the actual sidewalk? For a while, there were little rubber ramps. Well, let's go back to the zebras. The zebras were the black and white clumps that were referred to as zebras because they were black and white, but they looked more like a belly-up armadillo without legs. Okay, and we all ran over those. After that, they put these concrete curbs in, they painted them bright yellow, they made little cute little ramps up to them. And that only worked if you actually ran straight up onto one. If you brushed the side of it, again, not anticipating anything being out there, ran up on the edge of it, your tendency would be to jerk that wheel and throw you out into the other lane, crash into a car. The last few months, the curbs have been hit a number of times. They have put out, have y'all seen this? They have put out little tiny orange flags on little wires, kind of like, but smaller than what AT&amp;T would stick in your yard if you had called them and you were to call before you did. Well, you can imagine on the street how long that lasted. The few that are even still there flopped on the street on the inside of the curb where a vehicle couldn't sit. The curbs are scuffed, the ends are crumbling due to being run up on. If there are others anywhere in, not Springdale, but other towns, I have not encountered them. Have you? No. There's probably a reason for that. So, a few Sunday evenings ago, I have neighbors on Maple, right beyond the parking garage, and I was going to drop off some heavy sacks of milk I was passing on, and it's dusk. And this is my tipping point for coming tonight. It's dusk, there's, the sun is right in my face, and I am pulling, easing over to the curb just to hand this off. And all of a sudden, there are cyclists, and I just said there weren't any, there were, coming this close to me. I could not even see them with the sun glare. And they were coming east in the westbound cycle lane. And they had felt protected because of those curbs from crossing the highway. Those curbs end right before, right at the bus stop there by the parking garage. So, they were feeling protected, and they were in the, going the wrong way. And I almost smacked into them. I mean, you couldn't even, you all have been in glare like that. What happened to the rule we all learned that bikes go with the flow of traffic and pedestrians face the traffic so they can see it coming? Okay, and the next thing is, Sunday before last, that was three weeks ago, Sunday before last, the last curb by the Jones Clinic before you come to the Maple and Maple intersection, somebody hit it hard and something big. Broke in two, did anybody see this? It broke in two, so here's the curb. A big chunk of it went this way halfway into the bike lane. There was rebar this long sticking out and curved up into the street, which could have done in your car, tires, everything. And if a cyclist had been watching the traffic and not their little lane, they would have gone over their handlebars and straight into the street. Now, I'm telling you, these are a hazard. They are more dangerous. The people crossing the streets at that point, going to the hospital, having driven in the parking garage and out, they're not children. There are no unaccompanied children at the hospital on that side of things. It's adults. And these adults in their, on their bikes coming at me were at least in their 30s. If you do anything else to those lanes, I would recommend getting rid of the curbs, and I'm sorry to have to even tell it, but we need to put big stenciled arrows directing them, this is westbound, this is eastbound. Now, I am going to ask you all to seriously consider ridding our town of this experiment that is more hazard than helping anybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Do we have anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd recommend a motion to approve them as presented.
Move a second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
I'll move for both A and B.
Second. Got a motion, a second, for both A and B. And we'll call for the vote. All right, thank you. Item seven, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations. Sharon Tromberg, Director of Planning and Community Development. Sharon?
Good evening, council mayor. Make sure it's on this time. All right. The first item we have tonight is a rezoning from A1, I'm sorry, from a PUD to a revised PUD. And I emailed some notes early this morning. I hope that everybody received those and has provided some context around this. So, if you want, I will just read these titles, but if you guys do have follow-up questions that weren't answered with these notes, feel free to ask, and I'm happy to. The first one reads, "In ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-2502, certain lands located south of East Robinson Avenue and north of East John Tyson Parkway from a planned unit development PUD to a revised planned unit development PUD within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
I'll make a motion that the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. I think Jeff, you were, you looked like you were about to ask a question.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask you, Sharon, just for a little explanation of the revision.
Yep, it pertains to a unique feature in Phase One and Phase Four of this development, where they have rear-loaded residential lots. And so, the front yards actually face like a shared pedestrian courtyard. And because they're rear-loaded on alleys, those alleys can get congested with vehicle traffic very quickly in the evenings. So, they came back for Phase Four preliminary plat, and we asked that they revise this PUD and bring forth some sort of mechanism to make sure that emergency vehicles would have adequate access up and down those alleys. So, they, they came back with a towing agreement, a signed towing agreement, that they're gonna have a file on record with us in the police department.
They're gonna tow any vehicles that's in the way, in the alley.
Yeah, and they set parameters of how many days, hold on. There was a copy in the packet. I think it was like twice a week, and then what they were gonna charge the POA for it? The POA, the development themselves. So, it was with premier towing, flat rate of 200, and some would be by appointment only, but they have agreed that they will begin regular drive-throughs and monitoring of the property, as well as responding to calls from the POA for vehicle removal.
And does that mean there's no parking in those alleys, or are there certain areas that they can park and certain areas that they can't park?
There are. There are garage spaces and two off-street parkings in the driveway, but we just did not, after Phase One was completed, final platted and built out, we felt that it wasn't adequate parking, that the alleys were still getting congested.
So, if the city sees a problem going on, then we will be contacting the POA and say, hey, you need to start having these vehicles towed, or how's that gonna be monitored, I guess is what I'm asking?
Hopefully by the development, the POA. Or by residents. I mean, there was an amendment to the covenants. It could be a citizen, it could be us, they could call the police station, but we asked for a towing agreement just so there would not be a high volume of police calls just to tow vehicles out of one specific development.
And there was also gonna be signage put along all the, no parking?
Signage put as well, correct.
Other questions? Anyone in the audience have questions about this before we vote? All right. Let's call for the vote on the ordinance.
Carrier's eight zero.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted. Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carrier's eight zero.
All right. Our second rezoning is also a PUD. It's for approximately 111.14 acres, the intersection of Arkansas Highway 112 and Wagon Wheel Road. The title reads, "In ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-2515, certain lands located the northeast corner of Arkansas Highway 112 and West Wagon Wheel Road from an agricultural district to a planned unit development with a PUD within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency." And I know that some of the representatives are here if there are specific questions about the development that are detailed.
But this is just a rezoning, right?
It's just a rezoning, correct.
So, large-scale, all that stuff comes later?
It comes later. They've already submitted a preliminary plat, Phase One, for some of their single-family lots. That's on the eastern side of the property, but all the, they will come in phases. The plats for the single-family lots, the development plans, non-large scales for the commercial areas, they will come in overtime.
So, what are the areas, and I'm guessing my map is north and south, so what are the areas in the northwest section above the ponding area, on what I'm looking at, it's little orange sections? You know what I'm talking about, Sharon?
Not right off, but I'm gonna look.
That's the golf course, isn't it?
Is it the POA shared area?
Well, I'm talking about at the very, the very top of the, of the area. What is, what is all that? Is that residential?
Yeah. That's in Cave Springs, residential.
Think that means, is that Phase Two?
Oh, you're talking about within the, okay, I thought you were talking about outside of that.
Tell me what that means, multifamily?
Those are just townhomes, attached, single-family. It might be defined as multifamily in the code because there's more than a certain number attached, but they're planned to be attached, single-family.
All those are attached townhomes?
That's correct, yes.
Like four in a row, basically?
Quadplexes, yes.
Do we have any opposition or neighbors come talk and all that kind of stuff?
We did. We had several. So, three neighbors came out, raised their concerns. Some were just, just wanted some clarification on construction entrances. Others raised some concerns, but I think they left fairly satisfied or worked it out after.
We were able to give them our contact information after the meeting, tell them how to get ahold of us and let us know any questions they have, so.
And so, a portion of this is gonna be a commercial area as well?
Correct. That southwestern area where you see the water feature.
My biggest concern with this area is just the flooding towards the golf course and some of the neighbors to the, to the east, they have some issues already. And I think that this one runs towards the golf course where the creek runs through.
Of course, we have a Clomer study with FEMA, so we're working through FEMA, and we're also going to do a
Could we get you up to the mic, please?
Yeah, come on up to the mic.
Do I need to state my name and address?
Yeah.
Lauren Blast, One South Tudor Lane Rogers. We're conducting a Clomer study through FEMA, and we're also doing a ton of site work and dirt work to make sure that there's not going to be runoff. So, it's going to probably be a year plus more to make sure that we can move the dirt, let it settle, make sure that everything is going to be okay with the soil.
And again, that won't be addressed with the zoning. That'll be addressed with the large scale.
Yes, we'll go through all of that with the large scale, and we'll do, we'll coordinate with engineering and make sure we're causing no rise off-site.
Other questions?
It would be in addition to the fact that north is on the creek side, or the creek is on the north side of the property, and that's where you see all of the preserved, undeveloped, and unzoned land. Basically, all of that is floodland, and that's why we're leaving it undeveloped to help mitigate that.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt the ordinance. Other questions or comments before we vote? Anyone in the audience, questions? All right. Let's call for the vote.
Carrier's seven one. Does have an emergency clause.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, for the emergency clause. Call for the vote.
Carrier's eight zero.
All right, Sharon?
All right. This is a better picture. So, the next one we have is a rezoning from SF2 to C2, and this is located on Kendrick Avenue. The title reads, "In ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-19, certain lands located at 1303 Kendrick Avenue from a low-medium density, single-family residential district to a general commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience on this one? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carrier's eight zero.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second. Okay, I'll call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Somebody forgot to vote. Carrier's eight zero.
We inundated you with a lot of information this time. All right, our next ordinance. This one is on Wagon Wheel Road. The original request was from A1 to C5, but Planning Commission agreed for a downgraded zoning to C2. And the title of this reads, "In ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R-25-20, certain lands located at 2291 Wagon Wheel Road from agricultural district to general commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Can you show a picture of the other zoning map?
Was there a reason given why the C5 was denied, or why the Planning Commission wanted it downgraded?
Right now, some of the current land uses that actually surround this piece of property, they do have non-conforming residences and conforming residential units on it. So, they felt that, and we heard from several people in the community that had concerns about it, so the Planning Commission felt it was more appropriate for a C2 than a C5, which might generate more noise.
Do we have anybody who wants to speak on this?
We can. Go ahead. Yeah.
I'm Randy Kimbrough. I live at 4660 Callahan Mountain Road, and I've got a statement that I want to read. I know that not-in-my-backyard comments are somewhat discounted, but with that said, this rezoning could affect a lot of backyards and property values in the near future. However, I feel there are multiple regulatory reasons why you should deny this rezoning. I apologize for the legalese. I will take most of my points from the City of Springdale Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the C2 zoning regulations. I and a number of my neighbors are in opposition to the rezoning of this property from A1 to C2. Originally, the request was for A1 to C5, but more on that in just a minute. The Planning Commission recommended C5 for approval based on a quote from the policy, from a policy in the Commercial Land Use Section of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that encourages the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail, service, and office uses where the high volume, where high-traffic volumes and the greatest utility demands can be served, and more extensive outdoor display of materials will be expected and permitted that has frontage or access to I-49. The recommendation is contrary to multiple Comprehensive Land Use Plan goals, policies, objectives, as well as C2 regulations. The property is directly bordered by two single-family homes with six more single-family homes immediately to the east and west. These properties are on the street side of a 50-acre agricultural area that is directly bordered by four subdivisions. This property, an objective in the General Land Use Section of Comprehensive Land Use Plan states, minimize conflicts between land uses. A policy in the same section states, the mixing of incompatible uses on individual parcels in close proximity should be avoided. In the Residential Land Use Section, two goals stand out. One, protect the positive aspect of neighborhood character throughout the city, and two, stabilize property values and maintain the integrity of neighborhoods by protecting residential neighborhoods from non-residential influences and providing buffers between residential and non-residential uses. Under the Commercial Land Use Section is another policy. Encourage planned, integrated, commercial areas by discouraging spot commercial development and the stringing out of commercial development along streets. The placement of C2 or C5 between two houses in a residential area is a perfect example of what to avoid according to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. At the hearing, after multiple nearby residents and landlords expressed opposition to C5, it was proposed by a commission member out of a spirit of compromise that maybe C2 would be more appropriate. The citizens in opposition to C5 were caught off guard by the switch and were mostly unprepared to discuss the C2. and were mostly unprepared to discuss the C two option. The petitioner said C two would work for him and agreed to a change from C five to C two. A vote was called and C two was passed six to two. At home after the meeting, the C two category was reviewed and in the description of C two general commercial district, the last two sentences state, "It is the intent of these regulations that the C two district be concentrated in intersections of arterial streets. Extension of the district along major arterial streets in a linear fashion shall be discouraged." Clearly, the approval of the zoning change is contrary to this C two regulation. During the hearing, the petitioner indicated he wants to build a flex office warehouse space on this parcel. He claimed there is scarcity of this sort of flex space available. The land on Wagon Wheel to the east of the Stoltz Road, Robbins Road area and west of Silent Grove is already zoned commercial or is future planned for commercial. There are multiple signs indicating land for sale and buildings for lease. One sign advertises land for sale for a build-to-suit for commercial flex office warehouse light industrial uses. The sign aligns with petitioner's plan at 2291 Wagon Wheel. Another sign advertises flex warehouse space for lease. We fail to see why C five, C two, or any commercial zoning should be allowed at 2291 Wagon Wheel, especially when suitable sites are available outside of the residential district without having to rezone and cause conflict with residential properties. During the meeting, a couple of long-term residents of the Wagon Wheel area suggested that the commission give some serious thoughts towards a development plan for this area instead of piecemeal placement of commercial properties mixed with residential properties. The 50-acre farmland surrounding this property is bordered by Windsor, Monticello, Dellswoods, Stonecrest subdivisions, and Callahan Mountain Acres across the street. It is also in the future land use plan as low to medium residential, density residential. The area could possibly be future designated for a planned unit development, as it was reported that several of the current residents are aging and might consider selling their land at some point to a residential developer. One landowner with acreage said he felt rezoning this one parcel, "Commercial," could spoil the area from becoming a future residential development and then set off piecemeal commercial development. Our zoning laws are supposed to protect the citizens from this type of commercial intrusion. With a little support from a standing plan point, a PUD could be in the future of the 50-acre tract. A PUD where amenities and commercial entities would, that could be included would benefit and enhance the residential area instead of piecemeal commercial that would detract and devalue the surrounding homes. Finally, this is a policy from the General Land Use Section of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. It states, "Land uses should be arranged to minimize situations in which development on certain properties detracts from the enjoyment and value of surrounding and nearby properties. Regardless of the feasibility of a planned unit development in this space, the rezoning of this property to C two will show a disregard for the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and our zoning regulations. We ask that you deny the rezoning of 2291 Wagon Wheel from A one to C two. Encourage you to support the development of a future residential plan for this 50-acre immediately surrounding the property." Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else want to speak?
So when was the last Comprehensive Land Use Plan update?
Yeah, so it was seven years ago, so it's outdated. There's currently one in progress. We've gotten it through. We've had our public input sessions. We had it through Planning Commission in November. So very soon, we plan to bring it forth to city council because with, I, I mean, it, it was prior to the annexation of Bethel Heights, so our current land use plan is, does not show the updated information. It doesn't take into account for our new master street plan, for the 612 improvements, for a lot of stuff that kind of changes the landscape. And then just a couple of quick notes. As far as like a buffer for residential, we very much agree and support with that. That, that is important. And usually, our buffer zone is somewhere around a block length, so 300 to 350 feet is what we ask. And so if this one had been within 300 or literally adjacent to a residential, we would have asked for a lower class of commercial or office or some sort of buffer zone. And the last point I'll make is that property owners have rights. So as much as planning and the city would love to come in and say this would be a great area for a PUD, each of these property owners own their property and we just guide development. We do not have the authority to, to dictate what, what people want to put there with their own property.
Hey Sharon?
Mm-hmm.
Could you tell me what the difference is between C one and C two?
C one and C two? C two is, has a little more intense commercial uses, so C one is primarily offices. Offices, medical offices, veterinarian, it's almost strictly down to offices and a use unit four, which could be cultural, recreational uses. But C two opens that category up pretty broad, where you could have a, you could, you could have a 24-hour gym or a sit-down restaurant. But in a C two, it's not as high-class as a C five, so no drive-throughs, no, these louder businesses, which is what we, we didn't think was appropriate at the time.
Which brings up that picture that I sent to you all. That's Ms. Johnson's property right next door. It's within 30 feet of this piece of land. And so to, to, Ms. Johnson's going to be in a difficult situation. She's 80 years old. She doesn't want to move. She told me, you know, I'm 80, I don't want to live next to a warehouse. So if, as you can see that picture, you can see, she, she will be able to reach out and touch them very quickly.
Hey Ron?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Give us your name and address, please.
Oh, yes. It's Ron Minetz, 4900 North Graham Road.
Thank you.
Okay. So we were, we were talking about a C two, and I talked to the owner, that's what, what they're wanting to do. They're wanting to put a flex space warehouse for carpenters, for electricians, granite countertop makers in this, this, this area. And there is a C two space right behind Lighting Emporium on Athens and Market Street. And this is what, sorry, I should have had. This is a C two warehouse space, flex space. There, there are, there, they park their trucks out there. They have, those are electricians. The, the concern that we have is basically, that's not what we want in our neighborhood. The proposed rezoning of Wagon Wheel, 2291 on Wagon Wheel from A one to C two seems to me a bad idea. The Planning Commission said that putting a commercial flex place warehouse in the middle of a residential area fits into the city plans. Just because the planning department thinks that a warehouse would benefit Springdale, I can assure you that those that live in this neighborhood do not agree. On this two-acre lot, they do not provide any buffer from the homes that are surrounding it. See the attached picture of, like I say, from Ms. Johnson's next door. What kind of buffer does she get? Buffer should separate residential homes from commercial flex space warehouses. I would think that if you consider what the city says on their commercial design standards, it is the general purpose and intent of these design standards to foster the use and the development of the land in, in an orderly manner for both private and public interest of the city of Springdale, with special considerations given to the appearance of the community as, as such for this development. It is recognized that the appearance of the property has a direct bearing on the economic value of such property and adjacent and surrounding properties. The appearance of a single property affects not only the surrounding property, but the cumulative effect is to enhance or diminish the aesthetics of the entire city. So I, as, as Randy said, and, and the neighborhood has spoken, this doesn't fit into, I mean, when you did the C two, C five over on Robbins and Wagon Wheel, the idea was, okay, it's, it's already, you've got all kinds of businesses around it. You've got a 16-acre lot that will probably be developed. There's nothing in this. This is all residential around it, or agricultural, I'm sorry, but there are subdivisions, probably 400 to 500 homes within, what, a quarter mile of that location? So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name's Brad Hall. I don't reside, but I have a warehouse at 2231 North Lowell Road in Springdale, and I'm representing the owners of the property currently, Curtis Emery and Martha Wolf. When we presented at the Planning Commission, many of the objections were that the traffic's awful, there's trucks driving through here, it's not, Wagon Wheel is not safe for residential anymore. So we're all living with a 2000-era Planning Commission study that made Wagon Wheel a five-lane road, designated it as a connector between 49 and 71, and yes, the traffic is awful. It is not good for families and residential. I would love for all the property owners at one time to sell me and let me develop a Wagon Wheel. I think Wagon Wheel is a fantastic commercial location for the, just where it represents, you know, it's close to the Amazon Warehouse, which tells you that it is a, a great logistical location, that it can make it all the way to Bella Vista and all the way down to Fayetteville in a reasonable amount of time. That's why it's so attractive as an office flex space. Specifically, talking about the, the flex space that is available, the, the land that is available, et cetera, is mostly too large, too expensive, and it prices small guys like me out. So I'm a small veteran-owned business, general contractor that retired from the Air Force, moved to Springdale and set up shop trying to serve citizens in a different fashion of building their houses, taking care of things. And it is really hard to find warehouse space or office space that's smaller than 5,000 square feet. There is a lot of 5,000 square feet and larger on the market. That goes for about $5,000 a month. Myself, some of the onesie-twosie plumbers, tradesmen, just can't fork out $5,000 a month for warehouse. So our goal is to build smaller units in the 1,200 to 1,500 square foot range that cater to those smaller businesses to serve the citizens of Springdale in order to provide the electrical, the plumbing, et cetera. As far as the cleanliness issue that was brought up, I feel like that's a zoning enforcement or a cleanliness standard issue, not necessarily a use issue and a zoning issue. So that would be addressed, and I don't expect any of my properties to look like that, period, or to have a negative influence. We've lived on Wagon Wheel. When I bought CMI Construction, we were down in the Four State Concrete Building, which is just down the street from where we're proposing to build. We love the location. It's currently agriculture, probably should be changed to a, a commercial. Then there's Foster's Roofing. We built that building a long time ago, and then the building between Foster's Roofing and Four State Concrete, we, we built on Wagon Wheel. So CMI has historical roots on Wagon Wheel. This is down the ways a little bit. It is unfortunate that in these situations where decision was made in the 2000s to make this a major thoroughfare and not good for residential, that folks had homes there. Over time, it has developed, and now then, like we were talking about, it kind of has to be piecemeal developed because not everybody's ready to sell all at the same time. I hate that, but this is kind of where we are and kind of the first step, again, to turn it to what it should be 20 years from now, which is a, a commercial thoroughfare. There is going to be some tumult and difficult times in between, as it does, but like all major cities and, major cities and timeframes where they grow, go through these stages. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, the, the next page on this packet, what is that for?
This is, this is a picture, actually, of our 2017 land use plan. So seven years old, outdated, prior to our updated master street plan. So at one point, it was identified as low-density residential.
Sharon, isn't this kind of a, excuse me, a unique situation in the sense that when I think of Wagon Wheel, I'm like everybody else, I think commercial. That's what ought to be out there. And when you look at this, just to be surrounded all the way around by lots and lots of homes. I could never find the right wording when I was thinking of this earlier today, but the piecemeal, isn't that kind of what's gonna happen? Because I agree it ought to be commercial, but once we do this, that other, however many acres that is, I mean, who knows what we get? And to me, this is, it's unique. We, we don't see this very often, that it's surrounded all four sides, and it is old and, but...
And, and the A one, I, I believe the majority of them have resident, like, single-family dwellings on them, but an A one zone does allow for commercial businesses, I mean agricultural businesses, but it, it does, where the platted, the yellow, the platted subdivisions are solely only permitted for residential use. So somebody could buy, you know, the 50 acres next door and have a huge agricultural production that, that has a lot of trucks and noise and, and it would be permitted by right.
I see the C one back the one direction. What is the closest back the other way? Is there, do we have more?
The closest what?
Commercial.
Well, even, even just to, to, to the northwest, right up there, that's just a non-conforming. I'm not sure off the top of my head exactly what business that is, but with the concrete lot and the, the trucks parked.
Yeah, that's the RV.
It just has not, it's just still non-conforming, so they, they haven't come into compliance to rezone, but it probably should be commercial. So right there is an example of a nearby commercial business.
Let me throw something else out there, just, I, I think our residents in here and our council and everybody needs to be reminded of this. If you, I, I don't, I don't blame anyone for not being as involved and in tune with the recent legislature session as, as some of us here were. But we had, we had proposed legislation this year that had it passed, it, it probably would have wiped out, we wouldn't be having this meeting because it would pretty well wipe out zoning. And, and I'm afraid, and I say that, I, I try and see both sides of this because there's a, there's a, there is a property rights side too, but there's two sides to that question too. There's the property rights of, of a, of a property owner to sell their property and develop it the way they want to, but then there's the neighbors who also have property rights. So it's a difficult question, and Wagon Wheel's going to be difficult. We've got a, we've got a five-lane concrete truck route out there that, that's going to carry a lot of traffic. And yet, we've got the residential that was built out there. Not a lot of it accesses directly, not as much of it accesses so much directly to Wagon Wheel, but, but a lot of it does. But I'm, I, I just, I, I think this property rights question is going to come back in the foreseeable future at future legislative sessions. And, and I, I know the temperature down there right now, and, and that's, those political pendulums swing back and forth, but, but it's taken a pretty heavy swing toward, toward, I'd say anti-zoning. And, and so we're going to have to start looking at this stuff a little differently or, or we're going to lose the ability to zone at all. And, and I'm not, I'm not saying that specific to this piece of property because this is a difficult one. But I just, that, that's something with the legislative session just ended. We dodged a bullet this time, but there may, there may come a day when we don't have this, we don't even have this discussion anymore. Now, there's a lot of things that are appealing about that to probably everybody sitting up here, but it's not best for the city to not have any control over, over zoning, and it's not best for our residents. So we're going through this process, but, but it's a process I hope we get to continue to have. But, but for today, yeah, this is a difficult one because you've got a, you've got some people that, that want to, want to be able to market their property. You've got, you've, as of today, if this passes, you've got a buffer. Now, it may, may make the next one more questionable in that area, but I think Sharon made a very good point that we need to beware, be, take, keep in mind is that they could do what's across the street and to the north, or to the west, on that property right now. Or they could do other commercially allowed activities in A one. So heck, they could put a hog farm in there. I mean, there's a lot of things they could do. But, but this is, this is one that, this is one that I, I... But, but this is, this is one that, this is one that I, I believe is, what was, what was the Planning Commission vote on this, 7-2 or 6-2?
6-2.
6-2, we had one gone. We're gonna be dealing with wagon wheel, and we have been dealing with wagon wheel. Some of the neighbors here have been here several times now, and that's going to continue for a while, as long as we're able to determine zoning. But there are going to be pockets of commercial along wagon wheel, and I'm having trouble, I'm having trouble in my mind understanding where, why this is a bad place for one. And I know I'll get disagreement from our, from our neighbors, and I understand their arguments, but anyway, but we don't even have a motion yet. So, if we don't get a motion, then we'll call it good.
I make a motion, the ordinance pass.
All right, we do have a motion for approval.
Second, just to get an up or down vote, so we know where we stand.
All right, thank you. All right, are there other comments before we vote? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Fails by a vote of five against three in favor.
All right, thank you. And I would urge everyone again, when the legislature's in session, get someone that's monitoring that on, to have your email, so you can, so you can follow along, because I'm serious about some, not only zoning, but a lot of other issues that we were very concerned about this time. A few passed, but most didn't. Mostly having to do with local control.
All right. The next rezoning is also proposed to a C5. So, this is the old Brashears Building at 4900 North, South Thompson Street, excuse me. And the ordinance reads, an ordinance amending number, ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R2521 certain lands located at 4900 South Thompson Street from General Commercial District to Thoroughfare Commercial District within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, let's call for the vote.
Carries 7-1. Does have an emergency clause.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second for the emergency clause. Call for the vote.
Carries 8-0.
All right.
All right, our next item is also a rezoning, and this is from, this is on wagon wheel road, and it's from A1 to C5. An ordinance reads, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the rezoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R2522 certain lands located at 4100 wagon wheel road from agricultural district to thoroughfare commercial district within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. And then one note, the notes in red that I had sent to everyone this morning, I said that this item was related to item M, but it's actually item L, that appeal that it's related to, just as I FYI.
Is that for outside storage, is that what the C5 is for?
Correct. And whenever we get into the appeal, I think there's actually a site plan that will show, but it was, they're gonna have a gate behind that first building is what they're proposing, and they have some equipment that's on track, that's on tracks, that tear up asphalt.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Other comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, call for the vote.
Carries 8-0.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted. Second.
Call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Carries 8-0.
All right, and our next item is kind of in the same neighborhood over on West Apple Blossom and Chief Truman Brewer. This is a proposed rezoning from General Commercial to W1 Warehouse District. The title reads, an ordinance amending ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R25-23 certain lands located west of Chief Truman Brewer Street and south of West Apple Blossom Avenue from General Commercial to Warehouse District within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. And I included on the notes for you guys, but just to note that this rezoning request was approved with a 300-foot commercial buffer on that east side, that white dotted line up there.
So, it matches just to the south?
The one below it.
Matches what's just to the south, okay.
Yep, just like that one just south.
Sharon, can a, I'm assuming just they want it to be a warehouse district, that it's gonna be a warehouse, can a warehouse go into C2?
It cannot, dedicated warehousing. I was gonna mention that with that last rezoning. Sometimes it comes down to semantics of flex space versus warehouse, and the way that we consider it is the W1 is for dedicated warehousing, so there is no customer facing area, there is no retail space, you and I, just a customer cannot just stop, park, walk-in, shop, and buy. It is, it is just strictly loading up and distribution and trucks going out, where the flex space usually has like a small couple thousand square foot warehouse, but it has either office or some retail space, or some shop, or customer area. So, that's how we kind of classify the, differentiate the two.
And there's a lot less that can go into this than a C2?
It's much more restricted, yeah, yes, the W1.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
So, question about the buffer zone, what could ever be done there?
Anything permitted in a C2.
Second.
Got a motion of second? Any other discussion? Okay.
And the engineer does?
Oh, yeah, well, David, I always give you all the chance. Let me hear from the council first.
I'm sorry, is that what you're?
Sharon, it matches up with the property to the south in that the property to the south is also a warehouse district, is that correct? Where the buffer zone, that is C2?
Correct.
So, anything that could go in C2 can go into the buffer zone?
Correct.
The thinking there is it kind of buffers, and I remember, David, when we did that property to the south, there was a lot of discussion about that buffer zone, but the thinking there is kind of to buffer those homes on Walden Street from the warehouse district, correct?
That is the intention, because large strictly dedicated warehousing can be allowed with docks, loading docks, trucks, they can actually, they can, there's a lot of, a lot of noise that can be generated, so we ask for that, that buffer zone.
So, the property currently, as it sits there right now, the entire, the entire however many acres that is, is currently C2, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So, we're not really changing anything in the buffer zone, it's being left?
Yes.
It's its current zoning.
Okay. Any other questions for council right now? Okay. David, anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. My name is David Gilbert. I live at 5714 Walden Street. I also live on Chief Truman Brewer Street, but I don't know what the address is, because nobody ever gave that a house number, but my property backs, backs directly up to Chief Truman Brewer Street. I was not gonna come here tonight. I think most of you have probably already made up your minds about this, and I don't think there's anything I can do in the next few minutes to change it. I'm a little bit encouraged by the fact that you listened to the surrounding neighbor's logic on wagon wheel road, and in fact, he quoted to you from your own zoning code, and it's nice that that message got through. After the Planning Commission meeting, one of the commissioners asked, told me that I had some good points and hoped that I would share them with you, and that's really the reason that I'm here. So, my background, I've been a practicing civil engineer in Northwest Arkansas for 35 years. For five of those years, I did 150 very large retail projects in 38 states, many of them involved rezonings. I've done rezonings in Springdale as recently as year before last. I know a little bit about zoning. This is bad zoning. Placing industrial uses this close to single family homes on half acre lots is bad planning, but I think you know that. Buffering by placing a C2 immediately adjacent to residential homes on half acre lots is not really a buffer. It's better than nothing, and I'm glad at least it's gonna be there when y'all pass this, but it's bad planning. And again, I think that you know that. Those arguments were so persuasive that the Planning Commission voted eight to nothing in favor of the motion that I was speaking against. So, I kind of doubt that's what the gentleman meant when he said that I had some good points. So, if you've turned me off already, I'd invite you to wake up and listen to these, because I think this is what he wanted you to hear. The master land use plan has become a lie. The map that's currently on the city's website is not the 2017 map, it's the 2012 map that comes up when you pull up the master land use plan. It shows this entire area that we're talking about as being low density residential. I was once told by a member of the staff that, well, the 412 bypass changes everything. The 2012 map shows the 412 bypass, and it still shows this entire area as being low density residential. The people of Springdale deserve honest and accurate information from their city government, and I encourage you to do better. I heard Mrs. Stromberg say that, well, you know, an update's in the works, it's almost there. We were discussing this area at public meetings 15 years ago. All kinds of discussions about changing them to something other than low density residential, and it has never happened. The people deserve better. With regard to industrial design standards, you need them, but you do not have them. You have pages of commercial design standards that if you want to do an office building or a car wash or a Chick-fil-A, you have to address the surroundings. You have, your building has to look nice, you have to provide public amenities, you have to provide a detailed lighting plan to make sure that your light is not trespassing on your neighbors. You don't have any of that for industrial, and they are desperately needed. You do have an ordinance in your, section four of your industrial districts, section 4.1, subparagraph 1 says, "Any lighting visible from outside the site shall be designed to reflect away from adjacent residential districts." You're not enforcing that, and you need to enforce that. If I can stand at my kitchen sink of my house that's been there since 1985, or in my bedroom and pull back the curtains and look at your warehouse and I can see your light bulbs, you're violating this ordinance. But this all went through planning and everything was given the okay. My mother-in-law lives next to me, she says, when she gets up at night, she didn't have to turn on any lights to get through her living room and kitchen anymore because the lights from the warehouse shine through her windows so bright that she can see to get around. That's not right. So, I would encourage you to enforce this ordinance. Members of the Crossland family like to get up here and tell you that they want to be good neighbors. And at first, I thought they were just saying that, but then they started defining what they mean by good neighbors. They were talking about all the jobs they've helped bring to Springdale, and all the projects they sponsor with the Chamber of Commerce. And so, corporately, I'm sure they are good neighbors, but living next to their project has been a nightmare. The noise, the construction, lights shining in our windows, not just from the warehouses, the construction part was even worse than that. They seem to think that you've given them permission to do whatever they want to do back there with no regard for the neighbors. The only reason, Mr. Sprouse, that zoning is allowed, has been allowed to exist in this country over the objections of the land use right advocates, is to protect the neighbors from incompatible uses. This is incompatible. You know, Springdale's supposed to be a city. It's not supposed to be Arkansas's largest industrial park. You were elected to govern a city, not to manage Arkansas's largest industrial park. That mean, that requires that you think about things in more detail than making sure there's an empty warehouse for somebody to move into. The residents deserve your protection, and we're asking you to help us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Drew Dingler, Half Associates, speaking, representing Matric. Just wanted you to know that the intent of this property is to be in addition to the already established business park, and that future development would be of similar character to what's already established, which in my opinion is on the nicer end of warehousing.
Thank you.
So, have we had a ton of complaints about this warehouse area to the city?
Not a ton. During construction, when dusted, some, some folks from the adjacent neighborhood.
But no light pollution, noise pollution?
We did, even Mr. Gilbert had complaints about light pollution, and I think that was like a year or two ago, I think, the city.
From the time they turned the lights on in the warehouse, Ron Ritz can give you some background.
Has all of those issues been addressed with the company? Are they now, are they within code?
The ones that I'm aware of, whenever these first came up and Ron, Mr. Gilbert disagrees, and we can have somebody?
Ron, have you, have you looked at any of that? We have been addressing it, but if we need to address it further, we'll, we'll do what we can.
I think that's an accurate assessment. They did put light shield on a few of the lights on the east wall of the large warehouse building that directly faces my house. That was the worst of it. In my opinion, they are not in compliance, because again, if I can stand in, at my sink and see their light bulbs, their lights are not directed away from my residence, and that's what this code requires.
Ron, let's look at that again, okay, at night and see what, appreciate it.
These are, the properties on the north boundary, are those single family residences, or those commercial properties?
Sorry, I've gotta see the map real quick to confirm that.
Talking?
Yes. Some, some are businesses, some are single family dwellings, some are in Benton County unincorporated, and some are in the city of Lowell.
And again, that all came in with Bethel Heights, is that correct? South of that came in, okay.
Correct.
So, this came into Springdale as a commercial?
The, the, the properties just to the north of this that front on Apple Blossom are not in Springdale?
This, this is a snippet from a land, our land use plan, which anticipated one day, there you go, this is the current, the current view. There you go, this is the current, the current view.
So, and I'm just asking, this is a general question, how long on the east side of the subdivision have those been C2? Has that been quite a while?
We changed them to C2 because of their current use when they came in from Bethel Heights, correct?
Correct, correct. So not, I mean, several years. I can look up on an annexation map and get you that afterwards.
So it was C2 when it was brought in, is that what I'm hearing?
We assigned zoning to things based on what their current use was.
What's a green use resort?
Okay.
For Bethel Heights, correct. Typically, things are annexed in as A1, but for Bethel Heights, we tried to identify some compatible, similar zonings.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any other comments? Anyone else in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Kerry's 5.3.
It was rezoned in 2017.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Motion, a second for the emergency clause. Call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Kerry's 7.1.
C.
All right. Next item, item H is a rezoning on Seton Drive. The title reads, "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning R25-24, certain lands located at 4557 Seton Drive from Agricultural District to General Commercial District within Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency." And this was another example where the original proposed zoning was for C5, but based on the, the, the current land use in all directions, the commissioners felt that a downgrade to C2 was more appropriate.
And there was no opposition, correct, around that one?
There was not unanimous 8.0 approved. There was one neighbor who came out and expressed concern, but it was at the condition of, of Seton Drive and it being a dead end, more about traffic management than the zoning.
Move ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Kerry's 8.0.
Move emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause. Looks like we're to the resolutions.
Yep. Done with rezonings for the night.
Feels like the old days, Sharon, back when these things went on and on and on.
On and on and on. Yes, that's how, that's how Planning Commission felt a couple of weeks ago. All right, so the first one, this is, this is a sidewalk waiver for a large-scale development that we have Chem Station. The title reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W2503, of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks, and Streetlights, as Set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to Chem Station Expansion in Connection with L2502, a Large-Scale Development."
Move for option one.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the waiver with option one. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Kerry's 8.0, option one.
All right. Our next one is, the title reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W25-10, of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curb, Gutter, Sidewalk, and Streetlights, as Set forth in Ordinance 3725 to Our Lady of Sorrows Catholic Church Expansion in Connection with a Large-Scale Development, And I know there's a representative here, and just remind me, this is for all street improvements, right? Not just sidewalk, curb, gutter, all street improvements?
Do you know what future plans, say in the next five years, that road has on it for anything with the 412 bypass going in there? Or this 112, excuse me, 612? Get my 12s right?
Keep going, you'll get it.
One of them, one of those big roads. I believe, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, that Graham Road will, will dead end to the
I'll make a motion, the resolution pass.
Which option?
Option one.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second for option one. Any other comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Kerry's 7.1.
All right, the next item we have is another waiver request. This is for UAMS Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Center. The title reads, "A Resolution Approving a Waiver, W2515, of Street Improvements, Drainage, Curbs, Gutters, Sidewalks, and Streetlights, as Set forth in Ordinance Number 3725 to UAMS Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Center in Connection with L25-10, a Large-Scale Development."
Can you go into a little bit of example of why we would want to give that waiver or why we would not want to do it?
I can't, I hate to put you on the spot, Ben, but I'm not as familiar with them.
We're doing a road project there, yeah.
The UAMS, I mean, this one's for Deering Road, correct?
So is the road project already going to include all that?
No, we won't be building this road. So this is for Deering Road east of Jean George Boulevard to extend to Mary Frances. So they are building Mary Frances from Watkins south about halfway, and then I think they requested a waiver of those improvements from their south. This is for the east-west road that is shown on the Master Street Plan along the bottom edge of their property.
Watkins?
It's not for Watkins.
I was lost there too. Can you say that again one more time?
Okay, so this is a waiver of street improvements to what would be Deering Road, which is on the south edge of this property.
There a road there now?
There is not a road there now.
It's on the Master Street.
It's on the Master Street plan to be developed as a commercial street someday, but there's, they're not using it, it's on, across the creek from everything they're doing, so it makes sense to not tie this to the development they're doing.
All their entrance and everything's off of Watkins.
Off of Watkins and Jean George.
Are any improvements required to Jean George?
Not to Jean George, but they do have to improve Mary Frances, that's how their main access point is.
What's Mary Frances?
That's the road that parallels 49. It's between Jean George and 49, and it runs north and south. It goes from the Sam's Club south to Deering Road and then turns back into Jean George. Yes. We're waiving the south end of it because they're doing both sides of the street on the north half. So they're essentially doing what they would be required to do, but half a street doesn't really get you in and out of the UAMS Medical Center, so it was.
Particularly will serve what they're building.
Correct.
Yeah.
And will set the property up to the east well to be developed in future too. Does that answer that?
Move the resolution be adopted?
I'll take it.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second with, is that, what option? One? That's your second also, Amelia? Okay. Got a motion, a second to approve the resolution with option one. Other comments or questions? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Kerry's 7.1, option one.
Okay, and our next item, so this is an appeal of the rezoning that, that you heard just. Sorry, I was trying to find what number it was. It's the one at 4100 Wagon Wheel Road that we just approved, huh? L, that's right, item L, thank you for my own note. So the applicants, they asked to appeal. The commission voted with a 4-4 result, which failed. There weren't any rejections, any objections that were raised. The applicant came in the next day to the planning office, talked about some different options with staff, with planning and engineering, talked over what's, explored some of the options or solutions that could be, and the first one is they want to seek this appeal. And it was for paving requirement. This graphic, graphic explains it a little bit better, so that, that there are three non-conforming buildings on this lot. The front one, they planned to use as an office, and they agreed to pave all required parking spots in the front, paved drives on the side, and even paved some parking areas in that yellow highlighted one on the north side of the building. But what they want to do is put a, I believe, a fence to block off those back two buildings where they would keep some construction material and a couple pieces of equipment on track. Now, they plan to keep those indoor, but they wanted the C5 and the gravel just in case they have storage that stays outside sometime and that they would not be out of
So in this exhibit, it shows new asphalt on the east side and the north side. What about the, what about the west side?
They agreed to it verbally with us. They, they, they've agreed to do everything from the fence forward, and the fence, I don't think we have a pointer in here, would be about 24 feet above those parking spaces because they still need 24 feet as a clear drive aisle, so 24 feet above that proposed parking area. So everything north of that is what they want to remain.
Everything south of the fence will be paved.
Correct, correct, will be paved.
How do you enforce that verbal agreement, Ernest?
Well, they have a site plan that won't get signed off on unless they do it.
They'd have to bring forth a non, non-large development plan, and if they didn't show that paving, we either wouldn't approve it or would ask them to come back in front of
I'll make a motion to overturn the planning commission and approve the appeal.
Second.
Okay, so we're technically approving the variance by overturning, okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's call for the vote.
Kerry's 6.2 overturns planning commission and grants the variance.
Yeah, you want Ernest to kind of set these, eight and nine, we'll.
Yeah, go ahead. Ernest is working very hard on these, so I will.
Is Mr. Hart here in the audience?
I have not seen him, although we, we did have one, and I think IT has it. We have a separate, some slides from an adjacent property owner that wanted to share some information about this, so at some point when you're ready.
Yeah, I, I handed out to each of you a diagram illustrating items eight and nine. These were kept together. Item eight is a resolution for a waiver of sidewalks in essence on West Miller Road. In addition to that, at the same time, this came to planning commission, the property owner had also requested a variance so he would not have to dedicate the right-of-way, that's the yellow on the map. The red is the, for the waiver of the sidewalks. The yellow was the right-of-way dedication that would have been required. He applied for a variance, he did not want to dedicate the right-of-way. That variance request was denied. He filed an appeal of the denial of the variance request, and in the interest of trying to keep the property owner from having to come to two different meetings, we kept these two items, eight and nine, together, the resolution for the sidewalk waiver and the appeal of the denial of variance together. This council was generous enough to table it from the February 25th council meeting to the March 25th council meeting, and then to this meeting tonight. The property owner was notified by the city clerk after each of those actions and was advised what materials would be needed before the appeal could be heard. That's item nine. Item eight is the resolution for the, for the sidewalk waiver, you can hear that. But it's my opinion on item nine, the appeal of the denial of the variance, my opinion is property owner's not provided the necessary information, namely the affidavit notifying adjacent property owners of the appeal, and when the appeal would be heard, that's not being provided to the city clerk, so I don't believe that item can be, can be heard, which would put the property owner back into Sharon's hands on his lot split, that he would either have to dedicate the right-of-way as required by ordinance, or he could resubmit a variance request. Technically, you have to wait a year, but if he can show facts, warning, reconsideration, he could refile, refile the variance request within a year, but given the, given the deference shown, I don't know what, what facts there could be, but, so, long story short, before you tonight is just the resolution approving a waiver of sidewalks, which is the red area on the diagram that I've shown you. And what you have on the screen is an item that was, a document that was provided to planning staff this afternoon by, I believe, one of the nearby property owners who wants to be heard on this resolution approving a waiver of sidewalks. Mr. Goodman, I believe.
Hi, I'm Gary Goodman. My address is 8825 Crest Lane, Springdale. I'm an adjacent property owner on the, I guess, west side or north side of Miller Road, West Miller Road. So I sent a PowerPoint, I don't know if you have it, and had a chance to review it. I know I sent it late, but I was trying to prepare everything and get everything spelled correctly. Okay, thank you. My main point on sidewalks really is if he's going to, and I don't understand a lot of what goes on in these meetings, so apologize if I state, misstate something, but I believe the resident or the owner wants to split the property. Splitting the property would require curbing sidewalks and development, just like Spring Creek Farms or any other property that's developed into some kind of subdivision would require that. Waiving that doesn't make sense to me in that sense. So I've lived there for 17 years, 2008. I've used Miller Road, and when we moved into Miller Road, it was gravel, so it was really basically a farm road and not a lot of traffic. We have an access road, emergency access between myself and my neighbor, that a lot, it's paved, there is a gate there, so the cars can't use it, but a lot of people use from our subdivision, Spring Ridge subdivision, that walk, run, bike, everything out Miller Road, have done it for years. I myself have done it for many years, still do it to this day, very cautiously because traffic has increased tremendously. With that being said, I'm against waiving sidewalks and road development there. So sightlines are very, very terrible in this road, so I would say that the sightlines, you can't see in oncoming cars or anything. So I think that's one of my biggest concerns, especially in this area, on the frontage road to Miller Road, where I believe sidewalks would. on the frontage road to Miller Road, where I believe sidewalks would be, would be greatly beneficial just because of the sightlines that are so limiting because of the hill, the dip in the road, and then Drake Road that comes up next. So that is a major concern, and I included the pictures to really show you what it looks like. You can't see the cars coming. And those are from the edges of his property, looking west and looking east. Yeah, that's the edge of the properties, sorry. That's the dip in the road. And that's me standing in the middle of the dip of the road, so at the very bottom point. And then this is the east and west end of his property. You can't even see the dip in the road, so you can't see cars coming or anything like that. And then Drake Road, where the intersection is, again, very limited sightlines. Again, the road wasn't designed, and I know that. And I know we were annexed in, especially Spring Ridge subdivision, and a lot of this property was annexed in, so you all didn't build the road, I know that. But I just want to point out that the sightlines are extremely limited and really tough when you're trying to walk, run, or bike out there. So in addition to that, I've been to three council meetings, because this has been on table, I think, three times, or possibly. So I've heard a lot about sidewalk waivers, and to my knowledge, 8965 was waived several years ago. And actually, if that property had put in sidewalks, they would connect to the HKH property, which would be great, because again, it's on the hill coming up from Highway 112 towards the west. So you can see there, if sidewalks were there, that would be beneficial if it connected to the HKH property. This is also a property that was built at 8457 Miller Road, and I believe the sidewalks were waived there as well at the time. And this would connect to the power station, that's another topic, but you would have sidewalks there as well, so you could get off the road, off Miller Road. There's a property in between, I don't know the address off the top of my head, but that property in between, elderly couple will most likely sell, will probably be developed, because it's a very large property, and Springdale's growing and it's going to develop, so I see that property developing as well. So eventually, I think sidewalks could be included there. And then the electric power station, I bring this up because you put beautiful sidewalks. You see my dog there, which I love running with and biking with. Yes, I bike with him and he runs. We use it every day, just about. And talking to Sharon, that the one side of Miller Road was waived. That property was waived in 2022. Not to my knowledge, I'm not adjoining property member or property owner, so I didn't know about it. But that would have been a huge benefit to have sidewalk, just like in the front of the property, down the side of it as well. One keynote is they put three new power poles in that are gonna have to be moved when you develop the road. So you just paid a lot of money to put telephone poles in, wire them all up, only to be moved at some point when you develop West Miller Road, which I do not believe is on any plans to be developed. So it's Carol Electric, well, I think, yeah, Carol Electric owns the power station that was put in, power hub or something. And then there's a pump station, water pump station being developed. So those two properties put sidewalk in front. Love it. Love walking on, running on that. Really, the standards, so I tried to do some research about standard, road standards and everything. I measured the road. It's only 10 feet wide. I think the most minimum, according to 2008 standards, was 10 feet, 6 inches. And then there's no proper shoulder or even drainage on a lot of the Miller Roads. A lot of water drains across Miller Road from the farmland and different stuff. So I think that's a concern. And then, again, I don't know if there's any plans to develop Miller Road in any time future. So any sidewalks now, help anyone walking or riding bikes or running or using Miller Road, is a huge benefit to get off of it, even if it's 500 feet. You're off Miller Road and you're off, out of the traffic. And then, final thoughts, just in a bigger, general overview is Shawl Almentry was put in, so that school went in, more traffic on Miller Road. Spring Creek Farms, the first phase is 122-plus homes. They got Phase Two. They're now putting in the roads for and starting that. I don't know how many homes are in that. I couldn't find that information. And then there's a Phase Three. So probably 200, 300 homes, all going to be using Miller Road, all with not proper width, proper drainage, proper sidewalks, anything. That I think really is my big point, not only to HKH property, which is really what I'm talking about, but in overall view is, we're growing. We're growing everywhere, and land's gonna develop. If we don't have sidewalks and access for people to use, they have to get in a car. Spring Ridge subdivision is kind of isolated. We got Highway 112, which is crazy, so you're not going to get out there and walk or... In the future, yes, when they develop it. Yeah. 2027. So we're glad that's coming. Shaw Park, wonderful, wonderful facility. I'll drive over there most of the time, but we have neighbors that walk to it. You have restroom facilities, you have water, you have all the trails. We love getting there. We're less than two miles from our subdivision to that if we use Miller Road. So again, I think it's critical. We wouldn't have to get in a car and drive over there. We could really use Miller Road to get there. Spring Creek Farms put sidewalk in, that was great. Power station and the pump station, put it in the front, that's great. Thank you. I just ask that we approve sidewalks and force people who are developing land across Miller Road to put those in for residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Your picture of your dog.
Yes.
Can you go back to that? Can you back up? What, what is, who put that sidewalk in? What is that there that's?
That's in front of the Carol Electric Power Station, and it goes down in front of the new water pumping station.
The utility company improved that road there, or did the city improve that? Do you, or do you know?
I don't know who approved it. They did widen the road.
Improved it, improved it, is what. Who did the sidewalk and the curb and gutter?
I'm guessing, I don't know.
Okay.
To be honest.
Yeah.
I don't know who actually paid for it. I know as part of those two construction projects.
Is that Miller Road there?
Yes, that's around the 90-degree curve, heading south.
Sharon, were those improvements part of the pump station? Okay, so it was Springdale Water, or was that Beaver Waters project? I think it was Springdale Water. It was Beaver? Okay.
Beaver Water.
Okay.
So one thing I failed to do was read the resolution, title of the resolution. So, the resolution approving a waiver, W2505, a street improvements drainage, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and streetlights is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to HKH Residence Trust in connection with 8781 West Miller Road, a single-family dwelling. And the planning commission's vote, I don't want to steal your thunder, Sharon. Planning commission's vote was nine, nine to zero, recommending denial of the waiver.
On the sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
Sharon, was this property owner, was he given an option for maybe a bill of assurance? Because that is an option that we do, can provide them.
The commissioners could have considered it. It could be one of the recommendations of the, the commissioners still consider the four options. So he, he could have requested that, but he didn't. He asked to waive that sidewalk altogether.
And this, and this whole thing came up to us because of what does this property owner doing?
So he is, he wanted to split his property to build a new house. So he has a new house under construction, and before getting a certificate of occupancy to actually reside there, he has to have a sidewalk completed. We would not sign his lot split because he did not want to dedicate right-of-way. So therefore, it became an issue about the sidewalk. He wants CFO on his house and to not build a sidewalk, but also not dedicate right-of-way.
And the complicate matters. He's not here.
It does, right? Because if he doesn't dedicate right-of-way and he doesn't get a lot split signed, now his frontage goes from 80 feet to 900, which, that's a significant price for a sidewalk, I'm sure.
Yeah, because if he doesn't get the lot split, he's got to improve the entire.
And we're not asking for full street improvements. This is just a lot split and a single-family dwelling. So we're not asking for curb, gutter, street light, widening, just sidewalk for the single-family dwelling. And, and just to dedicate right-of-way, which costs.
So my question is to Ernest or to you, Sharon, either one. Help, help me remember how we do this on these waiver requests. The planning commission voted to recommend denial, but he's not really appealing that. They just recommend, it's not really something that he's appealing. He's still just asking for a waiver, and that has to be
Correct.
done by the city council, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And, and the petitioner's not here, and we don't know why.
And he hasn't been here the last two tries.
He, he has been made, made aware of all three meetings by the city clerk. I've been copied on the correspondence. I believe planning's reached out to him as well. I don't know.
And we're not dealing with the, the right-of-way thing at all tonight, is that what you said?
The appeal out of nine, I don't think, I don't believe we can, because he didn't, I don't believe he properly, properly perfected his appeal. We're just talking about a sidewalk.
So as it stands right now, regardless of what the council decides on the sidewalk waiver, he's not going to get a CFO until he dedicates right-of-way?
Well, I mean, if he built the sidewalk, he could, because he has enough land to have multiple principal structures. On, he has enough land for two houses, right? So he, he could do it. But if he wants that lot split for financing purposes or whatever other purpose to sell, not dedicating right-of-way would prevent that.
And, and we don't have any plans at any time to widen Miller?
No, but that could bubble up with all that's, to your point, Mr. Goodman, with all that's happening out there, that could, you know, it's all about priorities and where we've, we've got a large city with a lot of development, so we've got to, we got to prioritize this stuff, but
Right.
but it, it could come sooner than we would have thought if you'd asked me three years ago.
So, so if we don't do any road improvement in here, which would include curb and gutter, then and then he would have to be required to put an ADA-compliant sidewalk out there off of the terrain that he has. And when the road does get improved with the curb and gutter, then that sidewalk would be unavoidable, it'd be taken out.
More than likely.
It'd have to get into appropriate location.
He's not going to be able to put it right in the exact spot we needed, is he?
So during the planning commission, it was mentioned about the expansion of Miller, and somebody there talked about that there was going to be some plans here pretty soon, if I'm remembering that right. Who, do you remember who would have said that? Because of all the traffic and expansions and trying to get to Shaw and everything else, that was talked about then.
Oh, it was from a previous meeting, so I only have the April minutes with me. I think this was originally heard at the March.
I think it was originally heard February, I believe.
Maybe even earlier, yes. I apologize, I don't have those minutes with me.
Did I, did I understand, Mr. Goodman, to say that the city has previously waived the sidewalks on either side of this property on Miller Road? Did I understand that correctly?
That is my understanding, yes, sir. Well, there's one, the Harringtons, which is, I think, 85. The one to the west side was waived, I know that. The, the one that's two properties down, also built a home, and I believe that was waived. So that's the way I understand.
Well, we have a resolution that's been read, but there's not been any motions, so I say we move on unless there's a motion.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion for we grant his, grant this resolution with option one.
That would be the full waiver, waiver of the sidewalk? Okay.
Especially if we're not going to do any street improvement, because it doesn't really, to me, make any sense. Because there's going to be a lot of filth that has to be in there to comply to ADA. And to me, it just didn't make any sense.
Okay, we have a motion. Going once.
I'll go ahead and second that.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and second to approve the sidewalk waiver. Any other questions or comments?
I'm confused by what you just said, Brian. You said, especially since we're, we don't have any plans to make any improvements. Well, generally, it's when we do have plans to make improvements that we waive the requirements, because the city's going to do it anyway. But if we don't have plans, then generally, we expect the property owner to make the improvements.
Yes, that is correct. But we have, we're asking the property owner to come out there, in my opinion, on this particular property, looking at the terrain, looking at the utilities, looking at all the other stuff that's out there, that we're going to have to, that are going to have to be moved in order to get this thing properly in. It's going to be something that's going to be, and if we don't have road improvements, then yeah, there will be, there could possibly be a sidewalk that's out there along the fence line. I don't even know where the right-of-way line is. I'm assuming it's at the fence line. But at, at the other improvements, then it's not going to be, it's not going to be usable.
You know, the problem with a lot of that is it's all speculation, because he's not even here to tell us what's going to have to be done.
Right.
It is speculation.
And if, if the sidewalk waiver, if it's not approved, we've got a, we've got a motion and a second to approve it. If it is not approved, and he's not, and he never dedicates the right-of-way, doesn't get his lot split, then he's building another 900-foot sidewalk. Can he come back and ask for a waiver for that portion, even if this one is done?
I think that home is already built, and I'm not sure, because typically, it's the length of the property.
Okay. But he can't get his lot split if he doesn't dedicate the right-of-way?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
And, and if we ever do, you know, have plans or decide to improve Miller, it would be nice to already have the right-of-way acquired.
This is a perfect place for the bill of assurance, because you can, you can put a period on there.
Yeah.
And then, if the period passes, then it's done.
Option one?
But, and the question before the motion was, was he given the opportunity to understand what that is?
To understand what, what was, I'm sorry.
That he had the option to do a bill of assurance for a specific amount of time that would be deemed by this body?
Yes.
At, at staff level, he, he heard that, or at the planning commission?
At, at, at both, because it was an option for the variance request to, for.
And, and his response to that was?
I, I don't, I don't recall right off, and I don't have copy. It was either in February, March, and I don't have those minutes with me. So I'd have to go back. I can, I can recap you guys, and if that's helpful.
I think that'd be the perfect place for this, but he hadn't even.
Yeah, it makes it, makes it really difficult, and the, not wanting to even dedicate right-of-way. We, we don't even know where that's going, because he's not been responsive.
So is he wanting a, is he wanting a waiver granted or nothing? Is that his?
Correct. He doesn't, he doesn't want to dedicate right-of-way, and he does not want to build a sidewalk. He just wants to complete his home.
So explain to me a bill of assurance.
Well, typically, when the planning commission issues a bill of assurance, we usually do it anywhere between six months to two years. And it would put a lien on, on his property, and the agreement is that And the agreement is that once that time limit, whatever is set, typically a year or two, that if they have not done it, then that the city would come in and do it.
Move to table the motion.
So, hold on, I'm, I'm trying to, I wanna get, I'm gonna try to understand this bill of assurance thing. So the bill of assurance is we give him a certain amount of, we say that within two years, if it is not built, just using that as a general term, two years, if that road is not improved, then on, what's the responsibility to the property owner?
We, sorry, go ahead.
We can set the time at any, we, in the past, we set it at five years typically.
Right, so what is the, so if nothing happens?
If the city doesn't act at five years, then he's not responsible with his bill of assurance. It only covers the period of time that we grant the bill.
You all have been very gracious tonight to spend so much time and care on a, on a item that, and I commend you. I think that's great for a guy that didn't even show up.
This is gonna come up more and more. And this is, you know, we've had unique situations. This is another one of them. This is a guy that's, from what I understand, is wanting to do a lot split.
A, a bill of assurance would, it would require the cooperation and agreement of the property owner. So he would, he would have to sign something, but then we would then record at the courthouse.
We have a, we have a motion to table, which would override Brian's motion to approve. So we don't have a second yet on that. But if we table, then we could see if we could, you could work with him and see if we can get some kind of response and direction on any options.
I'll rescind my motion if that's the case, that we can go back to him and give him this option and we know for sure that he is understanding that.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, we got a motion and a second. It's to table. It's to table.
Have a motion, we rescind it.
So can I ask?
Well, who seconded? You rescinded your motion, you're second, you need to. Okay, then we don't need to vote on Mike's motion.
Who's on first?
Well, hold on, we have a motion to table and a motion, and a second to that motion?
If, if we don't table it, then the, then the planning commission's recommendation stands.
I second his motion. I seconded.
You seconded both of them?
We have a motion and second to table. My suggestion is going to be, and I know it's gonna put us right where we were before we walked in this room tonight, just in the interest of trying to be transparent and fair to property owners, that if we table item eight, that we table item nine as well. Because there may be some, something we don't know that's going on. There might be some legitimate reason why he's not responding to the city clerk.
You could have said that first.
What kind of notice does he, who is this person anyway?
His name is Mr. Hunter Hart, but his property is in trust. Hart, H-A-R-T.
And what kind of notice did he have? Was, of the planning commission meeting, was he not there?
He was.
He was at the planning commission meeting. And then what kind of notice did he have that it would come before the council?
He was told right there at the vote that, that he was.
And he was aware of that?
Correct, correct, of both the waiver and the variance. The variance was denied, so he was explained to the appeal process right then and there. And for the waiver, what day it would be heard at council and that they could consider different options.
And no one's heard from him?
Well, he did request that it be moved off. That's why, because he, I, I don't know the exact reason, but he did request more time. That's why I came to the council on February 25th and requested that they be tabled. And then we did it again at the 3/25 meeting. He also requested that, that it be tabled. Through, he made the city clerk aware that he wished for it to be tabled. He knew it was tabled to tonight.
So he's made two requests that this matter be tabled and he knew it was set for tonight. Why would we want to table it again?
We shouldn't.
Let me, let me just, let me just say this. I will tell you, when it was first, when it was first set for the council meeting in February 25th, he wanted it set later. However, under our ordinance for an appeal of a variance, it has to be put on the council agenda, no later than the second meeting following the filing of the appeal. So we couldn't say, okay, we'll just put it in April. So that's why we had to get it on the agenda, then you can do with it as you see fit. Does that make sense? He's been made aware going forward of every meeting date.
Seems like we've been very generous and very fair.
I agree.
And I don't know what else we're supposed to do when he just continues to not show.
It sets a precedence for everyone else that wants to come in.
Well, we, we do have a motion and a second.
We can, we can vote on the motion, whether or not to table. And if you vote no on the motion, the motion to table, then we can keep talking about something else.
Well, the motion is to, the motion is to table item number eight, which is the sidewalk waiver. I was just suggesting, while you're at it, if you wanted to go ahead and table the appeal too, but if you just wanna let the appeal die and just vote on the tabling the.
Mike, is the motion to table it to a particular meeting or just forever?
I'm gonna withdraw my second. Now we're just gonna let it die. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second? To table. Okay, that motion dies. It's as if we were never here.
Thank you all.
Nothing has happened.
So the planning commission's denial of the variance is upheld and there is no waiver of the sidewalk improvements. So we're right back where you started, Sharon.
So Sharon, if at this point, this may be questioned for Ernest, nothing happened tonight, it's dead. For him to bring this back, it'd be a year?
For the variance, there technically it's 12 months unless there's facts warranting reconsideration. That's why I said on the front end, I don't know what those facts could be, but that's what the ordinance says.
Okay, all right. What's next?
Okay, so I did finance committee at committee meeting. Jeff, do you want me to continue or you want to pick it up? Are you sure about that? Okay. We have four items on the agenda and items A through C were forwarded with recommendation for approval. Item A is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a new ice cream machine for the Springdale Senior Center. This was presented by Lori Proud and it was a resounding yes that everyone said, let's get them some ice cream machines.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carrie's eight, zero.
Item B is a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale, Arkansas to utilize Federal Aid Transportation Alternatives Program or Recreational Trails Program funds Pride of Springdale, represented by Ben Peters, Engineering Director.
Yep, this is trying to get 80% of the money needed to build bicycle facilities from Jean George Boulevard to 48th Street along the Harbor Avenue.
Second.
Move, there's a pass.
Second. Got a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? All right, call for the vote.
Carrie's eight, zero.
Item C is resolution experience, expressing the willingness of the city of Springdale to utilize Federal Aid Transportation Al- Wait, I just said that, didn't I? No, that's the same one.
Same thing, keep going.
Federal Aid Transportation Alternative Program or Recreational Trails Program for Thunder Chicken.
Yeah, so this is also trying to get 80% match of federal funds to, for, under the recreational trail program to improve Thunder Chicken.
Move the resolution pass.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Any other questions? All right, call for the vote.
Carrie's eight, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Item D, I'll, I guess I'll go ahead and take, well, if this is a, usually a formality, but we won't answer any questions if Kobe can do that, if, if needed. It was a resolution authorizing payment of an invoice for, out of our 2023 bond.
Anytime we have an invoice over a million dollars, we have to bring it for council approval. That's what this is.
This is Senior Center, right?
Yes.
I make a motion that the resolution pass.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Call for the vote.
Carrie's eight, zero.
All right, thank you all. Item 11, any comments from council members?
Sharon, I love the notes today.
That really helps. You might not know it, but you might not have been able to tell by the way we, because, because we had a real complicated one there. Appreciate y'all's patience on that too, so, but thank you, Sharon.
I was wondering, Ernest, do we have any update on the house on Maple Drive? Maple Avenue? I'm sorry, Maple Avenue?
I, I do. I'll be happy to visit with you after the meeting, if you'd like.
And then also, maybe you'd want to visit on this one too, but there's a house over on Don Tyson. It's, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know the address and I'm not sure if this is a question for Ron or Mike or who, I guess Ron. But it's not directly across from Savannah Street, but pretty much across from it. And it's obviously vacant and.
Painting wall there?
Yeah, I think so. And there's logs in the yard and a lot of brush and it, it, it seems like it's in pretty poor condition. I don't know if that's one we've taken a look at and, or not. Do you, Ron, you know the house I'm talking about? Well, it's pretty, it's pretty obvious as you drive down Don Tyson. So I'm not sure why we let houses get to that point.
Could just be that nobody's brought it to the attention and they have, they haven't been over there to see it. Is it a, is it an older home that's been there a while or is it, okay, okay.
On the north side of Don Tyson. If you were coming out of Savannah, you'd almost drive into it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from city attorney?
No, sir.
Nothing from me. We have a motion to adjourn, we do have a motion to adjourn and we stand adjourned. Thank you all.